Okay, I have your voice heard. So let me call up Elaine Chino.
Good evening. We have, excuse me?
Are you close enough?
Yeah, I think so, there we go. This evening, we have quite a couple of people talking about the oil and gas ordinance decision that's coming up. And we have Everett Chavez from Santo Domingo Pueblo, who is the tribal administrator. If you could put him on the list to speak about this, he's on his way here. And I just, you took the list away before we could sign up. So that's, I'm asking to add that name to the comments list. Hi.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'm asking to add Everett Chavez of Santo Domingo Pueblo to the list. He's the tribal administrator and he wants to speak to the oil and gas ordinance that is coming up in the public comments section. We just didn't get to put his name on there yet.
Oh, okay, no problem.
And so I'm just asking if you would put his name on there and call him.
Absolutely. I'll call at the end when I get to the bottom of this. I'll still ask if there's anybody left who'd like to speak.
Okay, very good. Let's see, I think I have enough for all of you here. Could you give this to the secretary and have him pass it down? There you go, thank you. As you well know, we have some issues with the way that the oil and gas ordinance had come about. And because of the conversations that had happened on May 12th, we are coming forward to ask you now for a temporary moratorium for one year with a timeline outcomes for this process. I know we've asked for this before, I know last year you voted on it, but it's not going away. We really need a strict ordinance. We need ordinance that are going to give us some protections. And it seems like you may have made your minds up already about this, but we feel that in order to provide the county with enough time to create, review, and update the oil and gas ordinance and regulations, and other ordinances such as the comprehensive zoning plan, the gravel mining ordinance, that directly influence the oil and gas ordinance, and to prepare an implementation for regulations on those. There have been significant changes in studies in the effects of fracking on rural and urban communities, and our community deserves to have a time period to have input on the significant changes that have taken place in the way that industry extracts oil and gas in communities in New Mexico. Specifically, the trend is towards large-scale consolidated facilities that leave a much larger footprint and have a greater impact on communities in which they reside. For example, in Sandoval County now, waivers and allowances of up to six wells in a five-acre tract are allowed through the OCD. And if you decide to have no ordinance and go forward with this, they could actually have allowances and waivers to put these facilities within 300 feet of houses, which they have done up in Sandoval County. So we're asking, I know you can read this, I want this entered into the record, I'm not going to read it now to all to you, but we have the concern, and that is that we're looking at, from what the map was given in the Garrity Group presentation, approximately 200,000 acres, 250,000 acres, that's a lot of wells. And that's a large-scale consolidation of facilities in an area that is populated and has an intensity for oil and gas development. We want to talk about the additional impacts and talk about what those impacts are on our community and environment. Our regulations should be comprehensive, inclusive, protective, specific, enforceable. And right now, as this draft stands, they are not. And they offer little protections. So I hope that you consider this moving forward, because in order to have the type of ordinance we need, we need time to do baseline studies and many of the things that need to be discussed prior to impacting our communities in the way that this ordinance will do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chino. Is Robert Cuslin? Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Cuslin?
It's close, close enough. Custer. Custer.
Custer.
K-U-E-S-T-E-R.
Oh, you know what, I was, I didn't want to run there. Sorry.
That's okay.
Custer. Thank you, sir. For red hair.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for the time that you're allowing us to speak. What are some of the questions before us in the immediate future? Attempting to see our problems in a larger context, there is a basic question of whether the massive debt of states, the nation, indeed the whole world, should sacrifice truly important natural resources for the expediency of short-term profit for a handful of investors. As an example, I cite the plan to give over huge chunks of national parks to big oil and gas, including the Grand Canyon for uranium mining, the source of water for the entire LA basin. Now, we have the issue of insufficient revenue to balance a state budget. This has always been and will always be a butterfly to chase. We have big oil and gas corporations and other supporting individuals and corporations whose fundamental motive is simply massive profit to the tune of billions, perhaps hundreds of billions of dollars, clamoring for access with no accountability for the aftermath of their frantic endeavors. We should believe in first things first, the big ideas, then the details where the devil always lives. I will leave to other more qualified speakers the task of clarifying and enumerating long lists of purposefully and woefully inadequate fine points in the severely slashed 32-page ordinance which has been thrust upon us. You must compare this with other successful ordinances such as Santa Fe and Miguel Counties, which are up to 200 pages long. They have their priorities in the right place. The immediate question, to allow or withhold permission for the drilling of lands adjacent to quiet and secure neighborhoods of friendly, earnest citizens, homeowners like myself, who are in the vast majority oblivious to the entire subject of fracking. We cannot expect the average citizen to become expert in the plethora of complex issues involved in drilling and fracking. Therefore, you must be expert and show a balanced ideology for the job with which you have been entrusted. My intention here is not to be inflammatory, but to state the situation in terms which some may not have seen. We feel that county commissioners should demonstrate the necessary knowledge and acquired expertise to be worthy of making these decisions on our behalf. But the question must be asked, what is your collective expertise, or what might be your knowledge or lack thereof, which will qualify you to make these momentous decisions for us all? And how might bias be a strong factor? I don't feel that it can be automatically assumed. And if there is more bias than expertise causing you to embrace a given position, I submit that it would be immoral and unethical to take advantage of the ignorance of the residents to push for a given agenda. It's important here to realize that huge tracts of these lands are in the hands of one or more individuals and corporations, such as AMREP and Thrust Energy, owned by Jim Minat, who are personally hoping to reap massive profit on their investments, transactions extremely important to their financial health, not the long-term health, well-being, and security of the citizenry. To interject an idea from Jim's own letters, this is a classic case of "not in my backyard" situation. While exalting the strictly financial benefits of development, he denigrates the long-sighted concerns of water and air protectors as an unruly, unruled, and uninformed group of professional demonstrators whose advocacy delivers no benefit to anyone. This reveals his obvious bias toward profit at the expense of safe drinking water and breathable air, as is the agenda of nearly every corporation in America today. I have recommended the Netflix video documentary, simply called Gas Land by Josh Fox, to the commissioners individually, getting a response from only one member. I can only hope you have digested the real-life accounts of decimated health, property values, and financial ruin of so many, many victims in the path of the BMF called the fracking industry. Money in any amount does not mean security of good living, but diligent guardianship of natural, precious, and irreplaceable aquifers, air, and resources, aside from oil and gas. This is the key to maintaining these inheritances for our children and their children's children. Bottom line, we should believe in prevention over remedies. A stitch in time saves nine. And above all, everything cannot and must not be for sale.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a brief reminder of the discussion I had with you at your last meeting on May 18th. At your May 12th work session, a set of oil and gas industry-oriented experts told you how benign and beneficial the industry is. The county regulation was undesirable and unnecessary. Before providing updated guidance and direction to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the staff, you really need to hear the rest of the story. The commission should conduct another work session with formal, expert presentations addressing the potential downsides of industry operations. At a minimum, a failure to do so would look bad to your constituents. At a maximum, it might have legal consequences. So I guess my question for you is, have you decided to schedule such a work session? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Mr. Howell.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Benton Howell. I live at 924 Salt Cedar Court in Bernio Township. I'm here to address the missing rules and regulations of this new oil and gas ordinance. In the context of oil and gas wells, I believe one of the biggest risks for aquifers is the possibility of contamination by complex mixtures of organic compounds. In a publication evaluating a groundwater supply contamination incident attributed to Marcellus Shale development by Gorth LeWellum, a toxic compound, 2-n butoxyethanol, was identified in the flowback from Marcellus Shale wells in Pennsylvania. We need to know how common this is, how often it happens, and whether it can be controlled or eliminated, and at what cost. So I decided to call Jim Brishwald, OCD Developmental Bureau Chief in New Mexico. I asked about the number of releases or spills. He said that overall, we have typically three or four releases of chemical compounds besides the hydrocarbons being sought, per day, year by year. The bulk of these are reported by industry, and others by well operators. In fact, he showed me how to get on the OCD website and look up the data on release incidents associated with these oil and gas wells. So the well operator has a spill. He must file information about the spill by giving him a case number for his remediation permit. We talked about benzene as an example of one of these compounds in the release. In New Mexico, the standard is that benzene must be below 10 parts per bin for benzene and water, but not for soils. So the operator must remove the soil and clean it up, and then return it to the approximate location. This is to keep the benzene that's still in it from getting back in the water. The information is part of the report that gets filed. A timescale of the groundwater impact is created. This timescale can and should tell when the release occurred, when the initial report was filed, when the report response was filed, and the time and a method for remediation was implemented. And then the operator turns the system off, the groundwater has to stay at standards for two years. Measurements will be made each quarter for eight consecutive quarters. These measurements are made at monitoring wells at certain points around the well. But there is a problem. There are tens of thousands of wells needing remediation, and this is over decades. So this tells us that with the rules of OCD, which presumably would be one of the things that would have to be used even by the county in assessing the wells, and the smart, hard-working people who are reviewing the records of these wells with known spills and releases, we don't know how much contamination of groundwater is present for long periods of time, and is still happening. So we need rules and processes in our new oil and gas ordinance to protect our drinking water that the state does not use. This is necessary to protect the people living in these communities. And we also need good baseline measurements made before the well is drilled. This is just one of the things that this new oil and gas ordinance needs to include. To get this necessary detail, we also need an ordinance to allow time. So we basically need a moratorium. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Linda Hayes.
Hello, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Linda Hayes. I live in Rio Rancho. I am a California licensed architect and also an advocate for the disabled community in Mexico. When George W. Bush authorized fracking during his presidency, he exempted the oil and gas industry from environmental protections, damages, and oversight by EPA. This was an exemption no other industry I know of or can think of got. But George W. Bush gave exemptions for fracking, for environmental protections. This is an example of how politicians at the federal level and possibly also at state level, who get campaign contributions from oil and gas, have not put the health and safety of its citizens first. The only protections we have left at all are at the local level. The only protections we have for our environment are at the local level. We are not going to get them from federal government, we are not going to get them from our governor. We are only going to get them from oil and gas ordinance. It really bothers me when I hear people debating the fact that we might not need one. We desperately need one. We need everything that's on that sign back there. The only way we're going to get it is the local level. The state isn't going to give it to us, and neither is the president. So, we can't expect the protection on the state level or the federal level, we need to get it at the Sandoval County level. This is nothing less than, oh, Santa Fe County has already provided these protections for its citizens. So has Moore County, so has San Miguel County. There's no reason why Sandoval County can't have equal protections that these other counties have. So, we're not asking you to do anything that these other counties have already done. But we are reminding you of your responsibility to protect our health and safety and welfare. So, we are asking you to be leaders and not politicians.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Ms. Kate, Daisy Katez.
Hi. My name is Daisy Katez. I live in Placitas, and I wanted to thank a lot of the people who spoke previously. I think they eloquently stated their points. And some of the points that I was going to cover actually just what Linda stated as well, which is that people in our community are extremely concerned that the federal government has basically, you know, abandoned environmental protections.
Can you speak up? I'm a little hard to hear.
You can't, oh, you can't hear? Okay, can you hear now? Is that better? Okay, I'm sorry. I think people in our community are extremely concerned that the federal government has not only abandoned environmental protections, but assaulted environmental protections. And more and more, we feel that, as Linda stated, that the local governments are the protection that we count on at this point. So I hope that you'll do everything possible to make this the most stringent protection in relation to the oil and gas industry, and to remember that our water is also your water, our air is also your water, and we hope that you'll, you know, protect it as much as possible. And we also want to be included in the ordinance is, who will be responsible if our water, your water, becomes contaminated? Where does the responsibility lie at bottom line? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Katez. Before I call anybody else up, I've gone halfway through the list, and my question for the rest of the folks that signed up is, if you've heard already what it is you want to say, does it need to be repeated? I want everybody who's signed up to have their voice, but Jason, hi.
I'm sorry, that was for something else. That was for a later agenda.
Oh, okay, you're right. That is for something other than oil and gas. And then we have somebody that signed up for gravel mining, but let me ask Combs, Keen, can't read that, and Brown and Mees, do you have something new to add to the, okay, so?
Last thing?
Coons.
Coons, okay. Let's go ahead and go with Mr. Coons. And then I'll ask the other folks that have signed up if they want to come up and share with us something new. Mr. Coons?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Can't hear you. Sir, you gotta speak up.
Sorry, I used to speak into the microphone. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
The people can't hear you behind you.
Sorry. I'll try and talk a little louder then. I'm worried that if oil and gas is allowed to develop land by drilling, our water tables in jeopardy. Holding ponds leach poisons into our land and water. The industry is not known for its ability to keep its word regarding their ability to protect the environment for themselves. I don't really want that environment to have their protection fail, nor to rely on their good nature. The accountability for them is hard to enforce. Noise levels lower the property values, and air and water issues as well, lower our property values. Issuing waivers and variances for their activities allows them to proceed with those activities they otherwise would not be able to do nor should do. Our water's at risk, our properties are at risk, our health is at risk. I would like you to consider that we don't need the risk of oil and gas to develop here. Their profits are not in our best interests, and that the current draft of the oil and gas ordinance is inadequate to give us the protection that we need and deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coons. Is it William Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's William Brown. I live in Placitas, and I've been a practicing hydrogeologist for the last 25 years here in New Mexico. And I've worked both for industry and for regulatory agencies, and, you know, I can tell you that oil and gas production and water production really don't mix. You know, basically, the Albuquerque Basin or the Rio Grande Rift, which goes through Sandoval County as well, the water in that is provided for over half a million people. And when you have oil and gas production, and let's face it, we all came here in cars, we all live in a hydrocarbon-based society. However, when you try and mix the two, sometimes things go wrong. And, you know, we've seen examples of that on TV or we've read about them, and those continue to happen. No one would consider putting a sewage treatment plant next to a water production facility, because what if something goes wrong? Well, this is kind of the same sort of thing. And the problem involved in this is costs. If something does go wrong, the costs are usually enormous, to the point where you really can't fix the problem. It's just a problem from then on. So, in our basin, our water's probably our most valuable resource. The oil and gas industry does not have a great record of policing itself, and there needs to be some type of control or protection for Sandoval County so that agencies like OCD and NMED, the New Mexico Environment Department has a lot of teeth when it comes to policing regulated community that they have to deal with. However, OCD doesn't really have as much of that. And so when things go wrong at oil sites, which most of the time they don't, but sometimes they do, and that's what we have to look at. You know, typically, in a situation like this, in areas where we have lots of water production wells, we'll have buffer zones. Essentially, in those areas, there are no oil and gas production wells as a protection. And so essentially, the entire Rio Grande Rift is a huge aquifer system. It's not as big as it once was thought, but it's where we essentially get all of our water from. And when you do have things like methane intrusion or, you know, spills, fracking, it works, but it's not always known how it's going to work, how it's going to affect things. Do the wells have good seals? Do they have good grout? That sort of thing, things do go wrong sometimes. And so for that reason, and the fact that OCD, the Oil Conservation Division, they really don't have a lot of teeth in a lot of cases, they're understaffed, their regulations are somewhat limited, and NMED really has no jurisdiction in the oil and gas industry. So there's kind of this in-between area where local government agencies, for example, some of the ones that were mentioned earlier, have put in their own protective areas, and that helped. One of the things, though, those other counties that were mentioned, they don't have the same kind of geology we do. We have this big, huge basin out here, and obviously, there's water in that basin, there may be oil and gas, no one knows for sure. But when the oil and gas industry... But when the oil and gas industry says that they understand how things work and nothing bad will happen, they wouldn't need to do exploratory wells if they knew exactly what was happening. So, these are areas to look at, things to be concerned about. You know, I was struck by the young people that were up here. You know, our future is in our young people. And I think it's our responsibility. Our parents and their grandparents left something for us. And so, you know, I hope we do the same thing. I would strongly urge the county to at least look at some type of buffering situation in areas where we have high production wells and where Sandoval County gets most of its water from. Because again, when there is a problem, you really can't fix it once it's happened. It's pretty much gone. So, with that, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. So, I've got to ask the question again. We've got a couple of speakers left that want to speak in regards to oil and gas. If you have something new, we're interested in hearing it. The gentleman in the back, I seem to recognize you. Last name? Paulsborough. Come on up, sir.
I do have a little bit of new information, or at least be able to point out some information that's out there that...
What's your name?
Eddie Paulsborough. I live in Rio Rancho. My background, to begin with, I was a paratrooper in the 509th Parachute Infantry Regiment. Has no bearing on this. I just like to tell people that. I'm a geologist. I got my degree from the University of Tulsa, which is like Oklahoma's version of New Mexico Tech. I worked for the Corps of Engineers in geotechnical, environmental, as well as regulatory fields. I retired a few years ago. All of the information that I want to pass on is information that's available from the well-drilling logs that the city of Rio Rancho has for their well production. Some of the most interesting things... Well, let me back up just a second. I also authored a wellhead protection program for Fort Bliss in 1998, which is similar to Rio Rancho's new source water protection plan. One of the things that is interesting in that is that the Rio Rancho's plan mentioned the arsenic that's present in the water, but they really didn't say anything about where it comes from. Well, it's a known fact that the arsenic that's present in Rio Rancho's aquifer comes from very, very deep, well below the levels of where the strata is that the drilling will occur. So what that tells me is, based on the complex geology that Mr. Brown was talking about, the complex geology is indicated by massive amounts of extensive faults, a system of faults that is just incredible. I have two large maps that I got from New Mexico Tech in the back here. They're just too big, or I'd show you guys just how huge this system is. So what we have is a system of faults that reach down so deep that arsenic is traveling up these faults. They're providing a conduit for transport of contaminated water from very deep into our aquifer. Now, how's... What is the mechanism for... How's that happening? Well, it's called upwelling. And it's a process by which probably, very, very deep, there's probably some heat, geothermal activity going on, a process that's forcing the water up through these fault lines and fractures associated with the faults. So that's the system that we have right now. And this is the new information that nobody's really talking about right now, is that we have contaminated aquifer water right now that's naturally occurring, very deep, coming up into our aquifer. So now, let's look at fracturing, but not just fracking, but directional drilling. If we're talking about directional drilling through these conduits that are already providing contaminants into our aquifer, we don't need a spill. All we need is the process of fracking along these directional drilling lines to introduce the potential, significant potential, for additional contamination. Now, all I really want to say to you guys, and ladies, I'm sorry, it's just a colloquial thing, to you folks, is that New Mexico Tech, I understand you all have a contract with them to study this issue. What I'm describing to you right now is empirical evidence. There's empirical evidence. It's documented. They'll agree that the arsenic is coming from very far below ground surface, deeper than where the drilling would occur. And it's coming up along these conduits that are naturally occurring as well, introducing the potential for the kind of contaminants that 10,000, 20,000, or 20, actually, 20 million gallons of water per fracking hole, 10 million, along with 40,000 gallons of acids and other kind of matrix dissolving chemicals. The potential of that, as well as released natural gas and petrochemicals, to go up these conduits would just exacerbate an existing problem that we have. And all I want to say, I'm not... I know we... I realize our economy is so based on oil and gas production. I understand that. And I'm not... I don't have a feeling either way about it. But what I do have a feeling about is our unique geology that we have here in this area, 20-square-mile area, that New Mexico Tech should, I believe, work with a group of knowledgeable folks, Mr. Brown, maybe myself, to at least be able to discuss what we have isolated here, and what's the most appropriate step in areas of Sandoval County. We can get an overreaching ordinance, that's true. We can have areas of special concern, that's true. We can designate areas that may have more of a potential to become exacerbated from their contamination. I mean, this... So, really, all I want... All I wanted to do was present data, actual documentation of a situation that we have currently, and to have special consideration on how a proposed activity like directional drilling and fracking could impact our water quality. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. My piece.
Can I be on the list as well?
And I am gonna come with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I could come up here every meeting for the next year and talk on a different subject. So, a different aspect of this same subject. I was at the... My name is Mike Nice. I live in Rancho State Placitas. I am a general contractor. I've worked in the construction industry and have for most of my life. At the May 12th meeting, there were several things that were said that I think need to be pointed out to everyone here. First of all, I think that we... Many of us got the idea that this document, which is only 32 pages, 15 of which are definitions, is wholly inadequate. That's what I believe. But we got the impression on May 12th workstation that there was a possibility that this document might not even be passed as it is, and we might not have an oil and gas ordinance at all. That is, I think, of major concern to everyone here. Mr. McQueen was asked, Mr. McQueen of the Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources, was asked by Commissioner Block, what kind of regs the oil and gas industry lived by here in the state of New Mexico? And Mr. McQueen held up a document almost exactly like this. I, as I said, I work in the construction industry. These are the regs that I live by in the state of New Mexico. And so, I have a question. What... Am I overregulated, or are they underregulated? In Sandoval County, I have... I am also a part-time developer. I have to comply with at least 200 pages of Sandoval County comprehensive zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and area plans. That's a couple hundred pages that the oil and gas industry does not have to comply with. In the Placitas area plan, for example, if I were to develop a small piece of property, I would have to prove 100 years of water. The oil and gas industry uses 4.2... This is from Mr. Tucker at the May 12th meeting. 4.2 million gallons on average water per fracking well. And that's water that's never going to be put back in the natural water cycle. It's permanently removed and dumped 2 miles deep. Dumped, it's a toxic waste. It's no longer really water. But the houses that I build and the properties that I develop under these rules and more, I have to prove 100 years' worth of water. So, why don't we... Well, we're going to need oil and gas ordinances, and they're going to need to answer questions like that, and some of the many other questions that have been raised. Thank you.
You know, I can only read the first name. Is it Maya?
Yeah.
Come on up. How do you pronounce your last name?
King Flaherty.
Okay. Sorry, couldn't read it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Maya King Flaherty, and I'm here representing the Sierra Club Rio Grande Chapter. And I'm concerned about Sandoval County's intentions to allow more oil and gas development throughout the county, and more concerned about the lack of protections in the draft oil and gas ordinance. As you know, fracking is a highly intensive form of oil and gas extraction. It uses millions of gallons of fresh water and is largely unregulated by industry or government. It poses serious threats to communities and families, our ecosystem, and our air and waterways. A single fracked well emits pollutants like volatile organic compounds, these are VOCs, that are released alongside methane and other toxins. Toxic emissions are found all throughout the oil and gas supply chain, from well pads, pipelines, compressor stations, and everywhere in between. VOCs like benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene have been shown to correlate with certain cancers, asthma, upper respiratory disease, premature birth, low birth rate, and the list goes on. Period viewed studies have found that people living within a half-mile radius of a site show elevated levels of health problems, and communities living in northwest Sandoval County, like Councilor New Mexico, are subject to health impacts on a daily basis. The ordinance should include air and water quality assessments, including ground and surface water, and post-drilling air and water assessments. Additionally, there needs to be more transparency and adequate public review time throughout the application approval process, and protections for landowners, especially those living on split estates. I believe that public officials, our public service officials are in the business of serving everyday people and ensuring that their constituents are protected from industry bureaucrats and destructive practices of extraction. Climate change is real, and we need our local officials to take a tougher stance on curbing the inevitable changes that we are experiencing now, largely due to fossil fuel extraction. I hope you truly, deeply do consider the comments that have been shared here today, and I hope you all do meet with residents in your county who are concerned about fracking. And I hope that you talk to other professionals and experts in their field that can speak about the consequences of fracking. I hope you do the right thing. There's nothing wrong about doing the right thing by listening to people and standing by your constituents. The current oil and gas draft ordinance needs to be strengthened and include strong protections for our communities and our environment. And there is one more lady, if it's possible for her to speak. She did have a few other points that probably weren't mentioned, but thank you.
Maya, who are you talking about? Does someone here?
Terrible at public speaking, so I really only wanted to mention a very short amount of points. One, not everyone had the choice. There was...
You mean for the speaker?
That's right. That's... There was no other choice. Everyone can't cycle from Albuquerque or wherever to Bernaleo. That's, "I'm disabled and I can't cycle here." There's no public transportation. That's one. And the profit is going to go outside of New Mexico. The citizens of Sandoval County are not going to gain a dime from drilling. That's... Do you disagree? Say again?
I said no comment. Are you done?
That's... Yeah, that's... There was something else, but disabled, something else went away. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Oil and gas comment?
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay. My name is Diane Bloom, 2457 Tyne Loop, Rio Rancho, 87144. Got it. That's good. Sandoval County Commissioners, my comments are as follows. Firstly, an ordinance is, by definition, an authoritative order, directive, as well as a principle of governing action. What about a tenet of do no harm? Secondly, although regulations are industry-specific, their rules affect real people in real time and places. Consequently, a broad spectrum of interests need to be considered and weighed in your decision-making process. Thirdly, regulations necessitate enforcement. Industry self-regulation must be a non-starter. The current state enforcement practice is a joke, and not a funny one at that, as it reeks with laxity. Fourthly, ordinances need to be proactive, not merely reactive, as consequences are forever. There must be concern for those who come after, who are not yet here, to voice their opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Good job.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, honorable members of the commission. I didn't have a prepared statement because I just become aware of this recently. Unfortunately, I wished we had been in on the loops in this conversation earlier because... Let me first introduce myself, sir. My name's Everett Chavis. I'm from the Pueblo of Kiowa. I'm a former three-time governor. I'm currently councilman. But I've also had the privilege of working with all 19 Pueblos in the environmental protection arena, as well as my current position as vice-chair for the Sixth Pueblo Middle Rio Grande Water Coalition, of which we were just engaged in a conversation this morning regarding surface water and groundwater. And I want to first echo one of the comments made by one of the other presenters that may not be exactly what she said, but I concurred with the fact that, you know, the motivation for any decisions for the county should not always be monetary. I know that you have a charge to undertake some of these decisions, but as you look behind me, and including myself, I come from a very unique population group. There's only 5,000 of us. We have been here since time immemorial. And we plan to be here for a long, long time, but when there's external threats that are happening around us, even some of us that have engaged in developing ordinances in our own reservation lands that help us regulate and prevent adverse environmental impacts, and in many cases, even though we've used state ordinances as well as federal ordinances, some of our ordinances with regard to environmental protection is much more stringent. And so, I worry that some of the policies that may be coming up may not, in fact, provide that kind of stringent protections for the county. And this county is made up of a huge population of Native Americans. And water... may not in fact provide that kind of stringent protections for the county. And this county is made up of a huge population of Native Americans. And, water is life to us, literally, as it is to the rest of us in the county. We're very predominantly rural. And so, what we have, in my mind, again, as someone articulated also, my grandchildren deserve the inheritance of what my grandparents gave me. The ability to utilize the natural resources, be it surface water or groundwater, to sustain our way of life. And that's how much of an importance it is to us. In addition to all of the intrusions from the outside that always places some of our cultural resources at threat, this is another one that is, from a distance, going to be the greatest demise to our people if we don't protect it properly. Because of the contiguous nature of water and how it's connected not only to the groundwater, but the surface water, we're already having to deal with major changes in water quality when there's upstream of us sediments that have radionuclides. When there's higher amounts of organics that now has affected our growing abilities. The growing season has changed as well. So, there's already all of these things that are affecting us. And I make a plea to this body here to be vigilant in its decision-making, that we have to protect our people. Sometimes I feel like an endangered species because everything that goes on around us does not involve us and to engage us in a meaningful way. Because we're equal stakeholders in the state. And the reason I say that is, most of our reservation lands are traversed by interstates, state highways, rail systems. We also are the pathways for transmission lines, natural gas lines. We add greatly to the robustness and the vigor of this state, north, south, east, west. But sometimes we get left out of the dialogue and it really kind of offends me that in a county that has a huge number of native people, that we're not all sitting here together engaged in conversation with you. And if there's going to be any initiatives, by God, it should be ordinances that protect all of us. We're all in this together. And I ask on behalf of all of us that are here that to, to practice that vigilance because, as one said and I said again, that my grandchildren and those that have yet to be born deserve the inheritance and what we can do today to proactively protect all our resources so that they can enjoy what I've been able to enjoy. And it was because of the vigilance of our people in protecting these resources. And it can't be the economic monetary agenda or the motivation that should drive decisions. Every decision that we make locally affects all of us as people. And it really bothers me that as a federal government, as was said earlier, they're trying to loosen up all the ordinances that many of us have worked hard to create. Because I've worked on the national level with the environmental protection agents to create some of the framework for tribal governments. And with this new administration coming in, paying little heed to the impact that it has to human lives is offensive to me. We still have a great deal of control at this level, ladies and gentlemen. I ask you to think from the standpoint of the direct adverse impact to human lives. And especially for some of us that have come from very small population groups. This is all there is of us. So, I ask you for your vigilance and thank you for the opportunity to hear me out.
Thank you. Yes, sir, come on up. Is this one on?
Here.
All right.
Yeah, thanks for having me up here, my name is Mark Leclair. I live in Albuquerque, New Mexico, can you all hear me? I came out here tonight because the actions you're considering taking on this oil and gas ordinance, they've been my watershed, my airshed too. And they have the potential to affect for many generations. When my grandchildren, their children could be affected by the decisions that you're going to make in the coming months. So, I'm here to ask you just, what's the harm in just slowing down? What's the harm in making sure that you're considering everything that you need to consider? We have some, some people come forward, some hydrologists. How come they haven't been at these meetings? I saw the videos from the work session meetings. How come it's only the oil and gas industry people that are speaking to you? Doesn't that seem like an oversight to you, Mr. Chappell? How come you can't take time for a few 15-minute presentations? Get some different perspectives? The geologists are not the only scientists that have knowledge about this issue. What's the harm in slowing down and making sure that all the communities that will be affected by your action can come to the table? As the gentleman who just spoke, Mr. Chappell has just brought that concern. What's the harm in just rushing ahead? Well, I can give you some answers on that question. Like some people have said, potentially chemicals, hazardous compounds, that can be released by fracking into the water supply, could be there forever. There's no way to clean some of these chemicals up. No way. I just don't see what the rush is. You can take your time, you can listen, let everyone who has a stake in this give you their input. I want to speak a little bit about the wastewater because I don't think there's anything in this draft ordinance that addresses wastewater. And this is a critical component of fracking. Once they inject the water into the well, they have to do something with it. It goes down there and like this, one of the hydrologists was talking about there's arsenic, there's radon, there's radioactive materials in there. There's all kinds of compounds in there that are carcinogenic and then will persist in our water if they're released. What are they going to do with that wastewater? Let's look at some examples of what happens when we let people just move ahead without planning for how they're going to deal with their waste. The Gold King Mine, how did that work out? How did that mine waste work out? They didn't have a good plan. I mean, go over there and talk to the novel. We can't even farm in some of their land now because it's polluted from that spill. It was a massive spill. What about WIP, how's that working out? We need to make sure that we have a good, solid plan. You can't inject 2 to 4 million gallons of water in each well and not have a plan of what to do with it.
Before you leave, will you mind stating your name and your address for the record, sir?
I'm happy to read that, my name is Mark Leclair. I live at 705 Grant Avenue, Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I hope to carry this conversation forward with you. This is not a political issue. We're not, I'm not here as a liberal environmentalist whining about what's going to happen. This is about our environment, this is about our water and our air. And I really hope that we can have an actual dialogue, not just smoke dirt at each other.
Thank you, Mr. Leclair.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Put your hand up.
Greetings. Commissioners, I want to thank you for giving me the time and the opportunity to come speak with you, the people here at Burnalee. My name is Bobby Valdez, I'm from the Pueblo Laguna. And I'm also the co-founder of the American Indian Movement chapter here in Albuquerque. There's three of us, the other one sitting back there, Mark Williams. But we've been involved with the fracking and all this with the oil, the waters, the tearing up of the land up in North Dakota, we were up there. We've seen what happened, how we were treated, how the people treated us for standing up for our rights, for our waters, for our protection, for our elders, for our people, our generations. And I'm glad that you guys are finally noticing what's going on out here. You're standing up for the waters, you've got to think about your generation, your people. And I just want to let you know that American Indian Movement, next stop will be Chaco Canyon, if it ever comes to it. And you think North Dakota was big, everybody's waiting to come down here. We're tired, we're going to stand up for what we believe and take care of our mother. I'm just here to let you know how we feel about everything here. And I'm happy to hear what I've heard tonight, the people understanding what this fracking, what is happening to us. Chaco Canyon, this area I'm talking about, the barriers, National History Park there in Utah, I'm working on that too. I do a lot of traveling to help protect my people. And I'm just here to let you all know that Aim Albuquerque is here to help support any way we can. We don't want, you know, we're a spirituality movement now. We're not back in the 70s, 60s, back then, whoever heard about American Indian Movement back then. It was a bad time during Wounded Knee, it was, it was heavy, it was, the arms were carried. Not this time, it's all prayer, spirituality. But yet, we still being harassed with that because of we, we handle our positions dealing with our Mother Earth, trying to take care of her. And I understand, and I want to tell you, I appreciate everything that was said tonight. And I hope that you stick to your grounds and get out there and stand up for what you believe in. Take care of your, your city of Burnalee, take care of your water. Look what Bismarck did to us up there, they, the well that Missouri River, the pipeline was supposed to go into the city of Bismarck, but no, they already found out that the water was already nasty. So, they moved it closer to the Indian Reservation, Standing Rock. Give it to the Indians. Is that what they're going to try and do up here? Push us out, look at the explosions, the disgrace they're doing up at Chaco. You want that done here, Burnalee? You think about that, it's all over, it's happening all over. And I'm glad you guys are finally opening your eyes. Thank you.
Come on up.
My name is Bethmore Love, I'm a resident of Albuquerque and I've been here since 1969, not as long as these folks have been here and their families, but since 1969, I love this area. And I went on a trip to my nephew's wedding about 10 years ago. I flew on a plane from here in Albuquerque all the way to Houston. I had a window seat and I was looking out that window and I saw these strange little marks all over the land, as far as the eye could see, all the way from horizon to horizon, and that was from a plane. Well, I didn't know what they were, I asked the people on the plane, what are those things all over the place? Nobody knew what they were. Well, about 10 years later, I found out what they were, they were frac wells. They were everywhere. And so, it's no wonder, we've already heard how many gallons, you know, how many millions of gallons it takes to frac one well, you add it up. We live in New Mexico, we can't afford, and you know, they've assured us that, oh, we don't have to worry about it because they're going to sequester that, they're going to eject that water so far underground, we'll never see it again. Well, we need that water, we don't need it out of commission. We live in New Mexico, it's madness. Where are we going to get all this water from? Do you have any idea where it's going to come from? I mean, it's no wonder Texas recently sued New Mexico for, for water. They fracked it all away, you know? I mean, it makes no sense, it's stupid. Yeah, and I can understand if somebody's a politician or say, you know, an elected official, what are they going to tell their constituency? Well, we're going to turn off the grid right now. Well, they wouldn't stay in office long, I'm sure. But, you know, the truth is, there's a vast and enthusiastic group of people that want to work on a more sustainable way to live, we're just waiting to do it. The technology is here, you know, the oil and gas industry is fading, phasing out. Renewables are becoming more competitive by the day. So, you know, and now what we have here is a set of politicians that are basically, they're in the way like a truck, like we have this, we have this climate emergency. We have the public will to do something about it. But they sit in the way like a truck that won't get out of the way of an ambulance, you know? And as for the, as for the regulation, I mean, I can understand, you know, but the only people I hear whining about regulation are the dirtiest industries. You know, for example, I would like to live in a very, I live very simply. I don't drive a car, pretty much like Don Schrader, we all know who Don is, but, you know, I wear clothes. Anyway, you know, I would love to be able to live in a yurt, like, you know, that I can build, like I built for Standing Rock, I was out there and I never met a more wonderful group of people in my life. They took care of each other, they weren't violent, they weren't nasty, they were wonderful people. All they wanted was clean water, you know, that's all we wanted. And, you know, it, why do we pursue this insanity? You know, it just, it makes no sense, I'm going to call it stupid, I mean, you know, if you, water is a basic need for life, you know? Gas is a luxury, I mean, yeah, it makes things easier for everybody, we can just flick a switch. And yeah, it wouldn't be easy to do without it, but I'll tell you what, I'm doing without it and I'm doing without it in my life because I care about the future and I'm all I can control. And, you know, if we, if we're going to go continue down this road of destroying what we need in order to have what we want, we're not going to last that long. And anybody that does budget knows that, it's just basic. So, thank you for your time and thank you for being here. And please, at least, you know, have a year-on-out moratorium on this, at least.
All right, I think that's a wrap for all the comments tonight. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Trust me, we appreciate your passion. And we appreciate you sharing your ideas, your ideas about how us, the county, can deal with the oil and gas ordinance. For those who aren't aware, we've actually been kind of working on this for better than a year now. Better than a year and a quarter. So, I would say we are taking our time. We're not rushing into anything. The reality is, we have oil and gas operations here in Sanneval County. They're not very near to where we are right now, but they are nevertheless in the county. And so, that's a consideration too when we talk about producing some sort of policy or ordinance that will affect that industry. So, again, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, appreciate it very much.